I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, May 19th. To order.
(Music) 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 (Music)
The question, the agenda, the approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the June, May 19th, 2015 order, a meeting is presented.
Second. The motion is second, answered by me.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of consent agenda items.
Move to approve the consent agenda items, just presented.
Second.
Motion is second, answered by me. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Please over.
Good evening. Just wanted to let you know that as far as the SGNEA, we are winding down our year. And we started off this month with Teacher Appreciation Week. Last month, I was so excited about the award we gave, I didn't even mention it. But I hope the district office couldn't exclude them from what we honored the other teachers with. And I think in St. John Elementary, we've just continued on with celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week with all the food. So I'm kind of waiting for summer to happen.[108.53][108.53](Laughter) But everything that went on, and we do appreciate everything that you support us with, and so that's one reason why we gave to the district office and to the other buildings, and hopefully the administrators in the building got a hold of some too. And on May 7th, we also had our end of the year celebration for the SGNEA. And during that end of the year celebration, we had the MNEA retired from this area, which is becoming a very large group. They actually helped out. They went to the park and started grilling for our little group that we had. We ended up having maybe 24 people, as many retired as we'd had active members. And we celebrated with that by recognizing our members' achievements. A lot of those members that were there helped with Amendment 3 and the different things. They went to the Capitol Action Days and was fighting for paycheck deception and the other retired things that was going on, that Congress was trying to do. And then we also presented scholarship recipients that we give two $500 scholarships to. And Adrian Weeberry, and I apologize if I mess up her name, but Caitlin Zolkowski?[197.62][197.62](Laughter) I always have trouble with that. But actually Caitlin was unaware, she just knew she needed to be at the park, and so she had no knowledge that that's why she was there. But Adrian did know because of other things going on that evening. So they were both very appreciative of the scholarship, and they plan to further their education using the funds that we provide for them. Again, thank you, and I'm glad we had a good year this year, and we're looking forward to next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the coming summer, right? Okay. And next, we have the report of the superintendent, Dr. Lindsey.
First thing I want to start with is, we received a very nice letter from the Chad's Coalition regarding the color run that NJHS did back in the fall. And I wanted to point that out and make sure that you saw that, very successful resulting in a $3,000 donation to Chad's Coalition. A new item that you see under Report the Superintendent is Bond Issue Project Update. I plan on just leaving that on there from month to month and just updating you on the progress over the next year and a half to two years as we work through the bond issue projects. Some of the projects have already been bid. I selected roofing bids last month, we're working through some flooring bids. Some of the items are things that we're doing in-house, surveillance cameras that were approved as part of the project, some additional car readers. So we're already in the process of getting ourselves set up to make that happen this summer. Also, there was a bid notice that went out on Energy Control Systems. I think those bids are due then on June 3rd. An HBAC bid will go out in the very near future, before the end of the month, I think. So we're making progress on things that we hope to get done fairly quickly. The major bid process with the general contractor, that bid package probably won't be ready until October, November, somewhere in there. It just takes a while to get all the engineering things done and all of those things identified. So we're making progress. It's about as we expected. We did receive the bond proceeds this morning, so they are in the bank account. And so we will proceed with the projects as we can. I'm becoming best friends with the architects at KRG, and we send frequent emails back and forth and phone calls and those sorts of things. So we're working through that process. We're also having ATG come in and look at the ball fields and to give us some ideas about what we can do out there. Some of you may remember that ATG is the one that put in the turf football field a few years ago. And so we had an initial meeting with them two or three weeks ago, and spent two or three hours out there looking and kind of talking through what we were looking at. And they're supposed to meet in early June to kind of go through some of the information that they've been able to get together. So we'll see how that progresses as well. So things are in the works. We're going to try to stick to the schedule as much as we can. Most of the general contracting work won't occur until summer of 2016. It's just too quick to be able to put things together for this summer. So most of them, there may be some of the work that occurs during the school year, but a lot of it really can't be done with students here. So that's kind of the process that we're going through and the progress that we've made. And I'll try each month to update you with those kinds of things. Graduation, Mr. Mercer and Mr. Haney, Mr. Haney has covered a concert, and I'm not sure where Mr. Mercer is. But graduation is Saturday night, 8 o'clock. I'm not sure what time that people need to show up. Do you guys remember? Bring it up.
Well, you could tell us to be there at quarter till 8:00 if you have.
I think the doors open at 6:45. So I just wanted to remind you about that. Project graduation will follow.
Parking is going to be for us up there, right?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah. We need to reserve those spots.
Yeah.
We'll post one here soon.
Yeah.
(Laughter)
Yes, we will make that happen.
Yeah, Detsi, on that ATB stuff, you had compiled a list of ideas that you wanted into the parks, correct? In the past, you know, did you present those to those guys?
We talked about a variety of things, and they had some ideas as well. And what I asked them to do is to come back with line item pricing.
Okay. But the idea is that you all had compiled prior?
Exactly. Exactly. And once we get some feel for that, my plan is to then involve the baseball coach and the softball coach and kind of talk about priorities for each of the two main fields, and then kind of match those up with the prices. And I kind of see potentially, of course, you know, I don't have the information yet, but kind of what I anticipate is that there will be some things that we'll be able to do kind of in a Phase 1 kind of thing that are the most important. And then we'll see how bids go with all the other projects, and that will give us a feel for what money might be available for additional things to be done in Phase 2. So that's kind of what I'm thinking about. This point, Matthew, EOC and ACT. Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Graduation, 8 o'clock, Saturday night, be here, doors open 6:45.
Yes, I think I have some notes from Mr. Haney here, and I apologize for my tardiness. I was down enjoying the choir concert. And on my way up, I was stopped by a high school student who needed me to let him in the building because he forgot his tux in the locker room. That was at 7:08, and his group was taking the stage at 7:15.[628.54][628.54](Laughter) So she may end up with a new soprano she didn't expect.[633.79][633.79](Laughter) I thought for sure that Mr. Haney had left me some notes. I apologize, I don't see them right now.
But Saturday night, 8:00 p.m., doors open at 6:45.
Doors open 6:45, yes. Thank you.
That's the important information.
Yes.
And we said, "Thank you for the parking in advance."
Yes.[656.29][656.29](Laughter)
(Inaudible) Oh, yes.
That should be right, on Friday?
Yes.
Yeah.
You have to figure something out then.
We'll fix you up.
Any other questions on that sort of thing? Turn it over to Dr. Flea for Matt, EOC and ACT.
Yes. State testing. I think we're all pretty excited because I can officially say it's finished.[691.41][691.41](Laughter) Grade level assessments. In middle school, we started day one and with all special education testing on Monday, March 30th. So in the middle school, I'll start with them, they tested from March 30th on and off until May 1st. And on May 1st, their testing window closed, they were finished. Their intent was, the state had told us we would get the results back in 10 days, after 10 working days, school days, after that window closed. While we closed on May 1st, and I think it was the following week, I got a notice from Desi that that wasn't going to happen. So now they're projecting the end of June. So anyway.
Did that surprise you?
No, I told them all along, there's no way this is going to happen. So they were finished on May 1st. Elementary began mid-April, both of them started testing. Of course, special education in that building started on March 30th to get through the process. They finished up completely last week, and today I made the official phone call and asked the MAP helpline, they call it, to close their windows, and now they are officially closed and finished. So we're very excited about that. Everything went well. This was the first year, both of those buildings, those levels had their state assessments on computers. I think the teachers were, especially the lower elementary, were very nervous about that, but everything went really good. I had a lot of student feedback, mainly at the middle school, some of the upper elementary kids that really enjoyed the testing that way. They didn't like it. But they felt it was an easier process. I think we did have some concerns still for our third graders, because some of the reading passages were really long, and that's just hard on a small child like that. But all in all, it went great. We were very happy. And today, we did have a few students who needed paper tests with their special education accommodations, so those were picked up too. And like I said, I can officially say they're finished. Then on Tuesday, April 28th, in the middle school and elementary testing, we did the ACT for all 11th grade students at St. John High School and the 11th grade students at Valley Catholic. So that required a four, four and a half hour block of time, it was about that much time. So they were trying to figure out what to do with that timeframe. So then we decided to also do an ASPIRE testing block with our 10th graders, which is an ACT type test that will give us some predictions on what we think our students will do next year on the state required ACT. Ninth graders did some job shadowing and some career awareness activities, and then we shipped all the 12th graders off to Six Flags for senior day. So it was an interesting day at high school, in the midst of all the MAP testing at the elementary middle school, but everything was great. It was a wonderful day, and it all went off. Not one move without a hitch. Then, that following Friday, on May 1st, they started EOC testing. So they finished up EOC testing last Thursday, so that is completely finished, that is completely closed. Technology spent a lot of time getting our devices ready, making sure things were right. First time being the grade level assessments of computers, there were a few minor glitches, but Nancy and Jason and Janet worked through them. And from what Nancy was hearing and seeing from other districts, we are very fortunate to have taken that step towards technology and the one-to-one initiative. Our students were ready, we had the devices, and it just, it was very smooth, and we were very fortunate, I feel like. So, you know, lots of people to thank, counselors, secretaries, admin, building admin, technology, students, parents, teachers, I don't know, it was just an amazing feat. Which brings me to, Desi is now, the legislators have kind of tied Desi's hands, and we won't be able to use this test next year. So we're not sure what is going to happen, but we have been told it probably won't be computer-based, so we're just hanging on at this point. I am going to go to a curriculum director's meeting in June, where they're going to have someone from the Office of Assessment and the Deputy Commissioner talk. And I know there's going to be lots of questions about curriculum standards and assessment, so that is my main purpose, because we're really hearing nothing, other than this, what they think is going to happen, and this is what's going to happen. But state assessment was great this year. It's amazing. Very pleased.
If anyone has a question, I will move on to the principal reports.
Because I did have one additional note on graduation, and just in case you're not aware that, the configuration of the gym will be spun around 180 degrees, so we'll be facing the opposite direction that we normally do. And one of the reasons that we want to do that is now that we have the video board installed and it's up and running, and we're getting pretty good at it, we can get some nice shots of the kids as they cross the stage. So maybe some of their relatives that are sitting off on the sides or in the back can get a nice clean shot of Junior coming across to get that diploma. So this is a good time for us to thank those sponsors once again. That's been an amazing addition to the gym. So thank you very much to those who contributed, and to also those who went out and worked to get those contributions. Mr. Haney has left me quite a few notes, so there are just a few that I want to go over with you. We've been through all of our concert seasons, we've been through all of our banquet seasons, and we had more than our share of kettle beef and liver dumplings.[1053.73][1053.73](Laughter) In addition to those things, we've had a lot of accomplishments from our students and from our teachers as well. I do want to take just a moment to point out a few highlights. One of them is that Mr. Nix calculated our MSHA Scholastic Achievement for our teams, and found that our boys JV basketball had an overall GPA of 3.08. Cheerleading had a team GPA of 3.23. And then on the next highest level, the Scholastic Achievement Outstanding Achievement Award, we had girls JV basketball with a team GPA of 3.57. Boys varsity basketball with a team GPA of 3.70. And girls varsity basketball with a team GPA of 3.77. So congratulations to those fine young individuals and their coaches and their parents as well. It's always nice to succeed on the court and on the field, but that GPA is also important too. So it's nice to see that our students are able to possess a combination of the two. Thank you for your help, everyone, with Honors Banquet. That was a great success. I think we had a lovely time there. Mr. Rook and Dr. Ederton hosted a very successful prom. I hear there were celebrity sightings that night. I myself did not notice anything out of the ordinary, but a good time was had by all, as my father used to say from the pulpit. Hunter Boucher and Tiffany Porter, by the way, were our prom king and queen, so congratulations to those two as well. Just lots and lots of busy things going on, all kinds of clubs and sports and activities, and we're getting to the end of the year now and getting ready to wrap things up. I did want to share with you at least a few of those highlights, and thank you again for all of your support.
Thank you.
Well, since we're going top-down, I'll go next. May was busy. We had a Windsor Band competition. Band had a spring concert. Lucas Welton Memorial Scholarship went to Sidney Alernt, and St. Genevieve Women's Club's scholarship went to Erica Reed. Our eighth graders visited our BOAG department over with Ms. Hannah Fritsch-Dunsey to figure out if they would be interested in some of those programs that she offers over there for next year. Our students met their fundraising goal, attended a Cardinal game. Math, seventh grade advanced math, had a field trip to Six Flags. And you may ask what curricular component to math people have going to Six Flags. This was a STEM trip, and what that means is science and technology was brought into it, so they were given a packet, and as they worked their way through the park and rode the different rides, I think, is it called the High Le, something Street Coaster, the thing that goes around, they had to calculate the velocity, and then they had to calculate how much water went down the flume in a certain amount of time. So they were actually doing curricular stuff there and tying science and math together. Ms. Hogan Miller and Ms. Larue both went, and they said it was fantastic. We did have the Run with Color on May 2nd. We had 111 participants, Amy Roland, Sharon Fowler, and NJHS, that's a fantastic outing. The founder of the Chad's Coalition came down and participated in that as well, and she was very grateful. The band also went to Six Flags and performed at their music festival. We had Teacher Appreciation Week, Monday, May 4th through Friday, May 8th, and that's when I gained about five pounds. Science Fair winners went to Skyzone. We had the eighth grade celebration on Friday, May 8th. I'd like to thank everybody who participated in that. We had a committee put it together. We start at 3:15 and we go till 11:00. Mr. Otto cooked hamburgers and hot dogs, and we had lots of parent volunteers and lots of teachers show up to help us out with those kids, and I think they had a great time. Mrs. Clegghorn took the challenge class to a movie at CC's Pizza in Farmington. I showed you some pictures of Andrew Marzuko. We had a fundraiser for Down Syndrome Association and the Challenger Sports Program, and he had an absolute ball going around collecting money from our students, and our students just embraced him with both arms. That was a real touching scene. Our NJHS Star of the Month was Lauren Mercer. She is the daughter of Scott and Natasha Mercer. This is Lauren's first year in NJHS. She has been essential this month in helping with the color run and Teacher Appreciation Week, while still keeping up with all of our other activities. She has shown leadership within the organization. Her NJHS advisors, Mrs. Sharon Fowler and Mrs. Amy Roland, commend and thank Lauren for her service to the organization and her positive character over the past year. We had a Feature Teacher Staff Person of the Month, Ms. Audrey Cherry. She has grown leaps and bounds as a first-year teacher. We have seen her at most middle school and even some high school sporting events. She is always there to cheer on our students and give them the support they need. She is tough and doesn't give up on any student. She has worked tirelessly on the yearbook, and it turned out fabulous. And before you leave tonight, I have copies for each of you, and signatures from all the students in there. So those are compliments of Ms. Cherry and the Publications Class. She's always upbeat, and I know when I am down or just need a laugh, I can count on her. She is an amazing first-year teacher. I am happy to know she is in our building, and can't wait to see the wonderful things she does in the future. So that's the middle school for me.
Thank you. Okay. We have been really busy with field trips and meetings in May, and we're still busy. We started out with kindergarten music program, and they do square dancing and a little program with like "Ei, Ei, O" on the barn, and it's really cute. Ms. Gilger helps with decorations, and kindergarten teachers do a lot of work with those kindergarten kids, so it turned out really cute. Then the next day, we had Kindergarten Buddy Day, where the new kindergarten students come in, and about 30 kids show up, and only one of them cried, more parents cried, but only one cried. So that was a good day. Second grade went to the Magic House. Fourth grade went to the St. Louis Arch and the Courthouse, they're talking about the branches of government, and they talk about those at the courthouse. We had Title I meeting, we had preschool advisory meetings, we had a guided coalition meeting, which is our leadership meeting. First grade went to Botanical Gardens. We had our summer book fair. Ms. Union decided to do an extra book fair in the summer so they could buy books to last December, and they had really reasonable prices, and she made some extra money for the library. It was nice, and there was a lot of work for her. We had a music program with fourth and fifth grade, and Mr. Kingry every year, it just grows and grows, and he incorporates more music instruments, and they just switch from instrument to instrument and play it, and it was really awesome. They played guitars and the quarters, then the xylophones, and the drums, and it was Fifth grade had a mixer with St. John Elementary and Community Center. On May 8th, we had an art show all week, the week of May 11th, and then parents would come in and vote for their favorite projects, and we're going to do the Art Winners next week in our awards program. We had a Right to Learn program. That is where it's an anthology from kindergarten to 12th grade, and they put it all in a book. If you haven't seen that, that's really nice. It's nice to see the progression from kindergarten to 12th grade. And the theme this year was how school was 100 years ago. Something cute was the kindergarten teachers showed black and white pictures of 100 years ago, and a lot of the kids put it in their writing that "School has way more color now."[1530.11][1530.11](Laughter) I thought that was cute. We had a puppet show to celebrate the end of testing. That was good. Third grade went to the City Museum. We had a character kids trip to Critter Lane, and we had Caps for Coleman Schwent on May 14th, and we raised over $250. I thought that was nice of our students. Kindergarten went to Grand Spawn for a field trip. Fourth grade went to the Art Museum. And we took a reading reward trip to Crystal City Park on Monday. And we have about two more field trips in Field Day, and then we should be finished.[1577.11][1577.11](Laughter) Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We did a lot of the same things Lori has done. Our, I mean, it's the time of the field trip, so I would like to say thank you. We raised money through our sales and through our events to help pay for all those field trips. So thank you to all the people that purchased items from us, because this is where it comes through. This is where they all get to go visit places. So our trips, we had several to St. Louis, to the Arch, the old courthouse, the Magic House, Busch Stadium, we're going to the Tiger Sanctuary, just lots of things that they're getting to see that they, some of them might not get to see otherwise. An interesting new thing we did this year was the third and fourth grade did a walking trip downtown, and there's a business, it's Sam Conlon, and it's called Rust is the name of the business. And she reuses our lunchroom cans, the big cans that vegetables and pudding comes in. She takes them, or she comes and digs them out and takes them down, and she has an acetylene torch, and she does decorations in them, and she sells them as like lamp covers, and you could put a candle in them, all sorts of beautiful work. And so the kids got to go down there and see from getting in what happens to those cans, so instead of going into the trash, they're being reused. She is selling them and using the money from all those sales to redo some of those historic buildings downtown. So it was a great, just to see what can happen when you reuse things. So that was a great time for them to see her do some actual cutting. So that was wonderful. Some other things we've had, we had a lot of students in the color run that the middle school put on. We had Andrew Glassy, who took place overall, first place overall. We had the Hat Day for Coleman Schwent, and we raised $441. We had Right to Learn also, and we have our Art Winners. So we're going to be announcing the Art Winners in the morning. We also had a student, Aiden Meyer, that was chosen for Do the Right Thing. And it's a great story, so I just want to take a few minutes to tell you. He was attending the St. Louis Cardinal ballgame, and Aiden was watching batting practice, and he saw a foul ball hit a gentleman, you know, foul, and hit this gentleman, and it ricocheted off, and so he saw that this guy got hurt, so he got the ball and took it to the man. Well, an usher saw it, and then he brought Aiden a ball to replace the one that he gave away to the gentleman that was hurt. And then Ryan Braun from the Brewers, who saw what happens, brought him a ball and handed it to him. So then he had two baseballs. So he looked around, and he thought, "Well, I don't need two, I'm going to share that." So he looked around, and there was a little boy in the wheelchair, sitting, watching the game. So Aiden took the extra ball over to him, which made that little guy's day. And he, you know, made a new friend and found out this little boy was from Australia. He was in town to go to, for procedures at Cardinal Glenon, and he'd always wanted to go to a ballgame, and his mom took him, and, you know, so during the game, they would wave back and forth to each other and see each other. It just is, the way Um, it just is, the way they stated it, he was just, it inspired everyone around him, his generosity. So a big shout out to Aiden and his family. They're very proud of him and we're very proud of him also for his wonderful gifts for that day. So that's Saint Jean Elementary.
Thank you guys. That's just amazing, isn't it? Okay, we'll move on to the safety report.
Uh, it's there included in your package.
Okay, alright, we'll move on to unfinished business. Okay, we'll move to new business, which is Eagle Scout.
Yes, we have a high school student Nathaniel Ogden with us tonight and he, uh, would like to speak to the board about a proposed Eagle Scout project that is considered. So Nathaniel, the floor is yours. You can come on, come on up here a little bit. There you go.
Hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Nathaniel Ogden. I am a Boy Scout and I'm also a sophomore here at Saint Genevieve High School and I go to the Troop 150. We are toward by American Legion Hall here at Saint Genevieve. And our scout master is Mr. Laurie, who is with us this evening. And, um, my main, my main, my main, my Eagle project is I would like to do an outdoor classroom to replace the one that was lost in the foundation of the pack. And, um, this time I would like to put it closer to the building. My, the location I would really like it to be is towards the, just the field down the hill by, by the pine trees, right down the field from the White Boarding House. Guys, that is close enough to the middle school and it's also close enough to the high school where they have a short enough distance to go. And, uh, yeah, and the benefits for this, um, it gives people, the students and teachers, an opportunity to escape the world of computers, go back to textbooks. And plus it's a great environment to be teaching in and it's the outdoors is a wonderful place to be taught in. And it's, I have talked to local people. They are willing to help. And I talked to the cross-country team. I also, I'm going to have my Boy Scouts group helping with it because it's a great opportunity for them to get their service hours so they can advance to higher ranks and they can get their Eagles. And for the finance, for the finance of this, this is the estimate of the cost. I estimated over, over four hundred and seventy dollars for this project, but if, if things go further through, I will go to local businesses and I'll ask them for donations and I'll also go to discount stores locally and hopefully they can help reduce the price of the Eagle project. And my also, my main priority is safety while constructing this project. I will require all of our Boy Scouts to have their totem chips. These are our cards showing that we know how to use tools. I will require them to bring this. And if they don't bring this, I will send them home so they can have it. And if they don't have it, then they can't really participate in the construction. And, um, I will require them to wear safety glasses. They'll require to wear sturdy boots, jeans or working pants and working gloves. But safety, I, cause me myself, I am responsible for these young gentlemen while constructing this project. And if they're not safe, then I'm not doing my job as a Life Scout. Life Scout is all about doing leadership for others and I would really love to do this. Cause I may wish, I would like to get this project done hopefully by this summer. So next year's seniors, class of 2016, can have a chance to use it. But they're one of the main classes. I really miss the old classroom and I'm, and I'm really hoping I can do this for them. And, um, bench designs is in the paper right there as you can see. I found a bench design that's made entirely out of two light boards and hopefully I can go to a local business such as, my main priority is to do it center. And hopefully if you can donate, then it can deduct our price. And I will construct one myself. I'll have a little tutorial of what goes where to show the younger boys and the others how to construct this. And, and that's about all I have. Thank you. Any questions? I'm prepared to know.
I think you've done a great job of presenting that and I think it was a great, a great addition to our, uh, school district.
Nathaniel, is your plan still to, um, I think when we talked, you talked about making, was it six benches?
Yes.
And then some sort of a podium, uh, that would be movable so in the wintertime or in the summertime it wasn't stored somewhere. And, uh, also, uh, I believe you said you planned to put some sort of weatherproofing, whether it be paint or something so that it will withstand the weather when it's out there. But, um, uh, is there any, anything else you can remember that you may have mentioned?
Also, we have to mention that you, I do plan on putting weather and stormproofer on the benches and our podium because I would like them to last as long as they can against the weather because the weather can be very brutal. We don't know what it can bring. So my priority is about once every year, I will go back to it. I will put re-storeproof and we, uh, we will, we re-storeproof everything to make sure it lasts longer. Guys, the longer the better, to my opinion.
Sounds great.
Looks like a, a great project. The, the benches are awesome.
Thank you. Thank, thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve the Eagle Scout project. Uh, Nathaniel Ogden has presented.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, I'll favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you again, Ms. Ogden. Okay, next will be the A-plus partnership plan.
Yield forward, Mr. Mercer.
Yes, um, I met with the, um, A-plus Advisory Committee last week, uh, which is made up of, uh, students, teachers, other faculty members, uh, board members, community members, um, nice cross-section of the community. And, uh, we went through, um, the A-plus program review that, uh, that we present to you guys and we also went through our A-plus partnership plan and made all the current revisions. A lot of them are cosmetic. A lot of them are updating dates, um, names of committee members, things along those lines. Uh, on the A-plus program evaluation, if I may, I'd like to point out just two things very quickly. Item number three, uh, which includes our dropout rate as compared to the state. It's right down here at the bottom. Uh, that has been updated to reflect the most current numbers, uh, the number that overpriced, of course. And then on the second page, item number 10, the number of interns that we have. That would include, um, ad-related interns, business-related interns. Uh, and then there's a separate accounting there for, uh, cadet teachers too. So I just wanted to update those for you, um, because those are things that will change yearly. Uh, and then a lot of this is, is repeated from year to year and, you know, minor changes, minor updates, but those are always, uh, new information there for you, item three and ten.
Any more questions?
Move to approve the A-plus partnership plan is presented. Second.
Okay, motion in the second, I'll favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next we have curriculum revision.
I think I told you earlier in the year that we had the agricultural, uh, curriculum ready to go, but we were working on trying to get, uh, like a dual-credit class with Mineral Area College for our animal science class. Um, we were not able to make that happen yet. Um, so we're still talking to Mac, but we are probably gonna explore a few more options. We've been, Hannah has been approached by another university to teach this class and maybe some more. We're just trying to, you go local? So anyway, the curriculum is ready to go, um, and we'll keep working on that and trying to expand her program. She's done an outstanding job of building that program and increasing enrollment into her courses and the FMA program. So very proud of the work that she's doing.
I'll move to approve the curriculum revisions to the piece, you know, agriculture is presented. Okay, motion in the second, I'll favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay, next we have the addition of a special education teaching position at Green Delta Elementary.
You have quite a bit of information in your board packet, uh, but we do have Dr. Green with us tonight. So if she can talk a little bit about, um, kind of the rationale behind it and why the, he exists.
Well, we have, um, currently twenty-one students on, uh, Green Delta Elementary Special Education Teachers, um, that she case manages. And then, um, those students all have pretty, um, significant needs. So right now they're being pulled out a lot and those services are being provided in the special education classroom. There's also a career professional, um, that assists and that career professional does go into the regular education, education classroom for one of the students to help keep them and support them in the regular ed environment. But our goal is always the least restrictive environment for these students. Um, so the more we can keep them in the regular education classroom, uh, the more exposure they have to the classroom and that's what we want. Um, and then you have to consider that, um, Cheryl is prepping for K through five grades and multiple content areas. So it's, um, when I did the case loads that Missouri has in, um, state guidelines, she's, um, really, really working extremely hard. If she wasn't as organized as she was, then, um, you know, it would be very difficult. So, um, in order to provide the best services for the kids, first and foremost. And then also it, it helps us with a few other things that we have going on such as, um, it keeps the kids in their own community. So if they are supposed to attend Green Delta Elementary, they're able to stay there. And then also, um, what they've been doing is if they have siblings, they will, um, transfer the student to Saint Jean Elementary and then that makes, that increases the numbers here. So if we can help have them be self-sustaining and they can provide appropriate services in the least restrictive environment, then I think that's just in the best interest of the children.
I'll move to approve the addition of a special education teaching position at Green Delta Elementary. Second.
Okay, motion in the second, I'll favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next we have the addition of the K through one RTI teaching position at Saint Genevieve Elementary.
Uh, little bit of, uh, just a, a reminder of, of the history. I, I know including this year and then looking at two previous years, uh, we have had really large kindergarten classes that have come in. Uh, if you remember, uh, three years ago, I suppose, uh, after the beginning of school and we realized what our enrollment was in kindergarten, then a fifth section of kindergarten was added. Uh, because of the room configuration, uh, in the elementary and the fact that school had already started, then that one kindergarten classroom ended up being at the opposite end of the building, uh, completely away from all the other, uh, sections of kindergarten. And then of course, the students had come in and met their teacher and, and got acclimated to their room and, and that sort of thing. And we pulled, you know, three or four or five, whatever the number was, from each of those classrooms and took them to a new setting, um, which is somewhat disruptive for, uh, for students of that age especially. We know, and then, uh, this year, uh, school began, again, we had a large kindergarten class. Uh, we, we wanted to learn from the mistakes that, that happened before. Uh, so we, uh, we tried a different approach this year by hiring an aide that, uh, that worked in all four of those kindergarten classrooms. Uh, and, and that did provide some help, uh, but still, you know, the large classroom size and then when you take one aide and, and, uh, have that person working in four different classrooms, it really just didn't provide, you know, provide the kind of relief that, that we thought it might. So, um, we started talking about this spring, especially since we know this kindergarten class that, uh, is pretty large is now going on to first grade. Um, and we don't really know at this point what our incoming kindergarten class will be. So we started talking with the, uh, the building principals, uh, at the elementary level and talked to Flea and myself about what we might be able to do that would kind of solve, uh, some of these issues and do it on the front end instead of waiting until after school begins. Uh, so the thought was that, um, that we could develop an, uh, what would amount to an RTI, uh, classroom, that would, uh, be separately located between the kindergarten classrooms and the first grade classrooms. It's in a room that currently, uh, has a special education classroom in it which we can, we can move. This location would be ideal for, for this type of setup. And so we started talking about how that might be able to help with, uh, with this large kindergarten class that's going to first grade and then if we have a, uh, fairly large kindergarten class that comes in. Uh, so once, uh, school begins, then we'll identify those students that, uh, maybe need some, some additional help, especially in the areas of math and, and language. And, um, I know that, uh, Ms. Diesel is working on a schedule to where kindergarten and first grade are, are opposite each other on those, uh, in those curricular areas. And so we'll be able to pull students from first grade and give them some intensive, smaller class size help within those two specific areas. Uh, and then if we have a large kindergarten class come in, then we'll, uh, also be able to pull some from kindergarten and work with them on, on some of the basic skills in, in math and language. You know, really we see this as, as, uh, kind of a preemptive thing since we don't have a preschool program in place right now, but, uh, hope it helps with some of those, uh, types of issues. I can't tell you right now what the split would be kindergarten, first grade. Uh, when we see the numbers in enrollment, then we will design it so that it matches up with the greatest need. Uh, those, uh, we'll, we still have four sections of kindergarten, four sections of first grade. Those students that have met their teachers and, and that will still be their home learning classroom, but they will be, um, uh, you know, identified through a process, but they'll be pulled for this more intensive instruction to, uh, to help them get, get up to speed and get up to where they need to be in those, those two areas. So it kind of serves, it kind of solves two problems at one time. It helps those students that may be struggling a little bit and also provides some relief for, uh, for class size.
And I'll just add that we envision it to be constant evaluation and re-evaluation. So once a child goes in, it doesn't mean that they're always gonna be pulled out to go to that room for math or reading or language. It's, they're constantly, what's it, maybe six weeks? Their evaluations of those will constantly be moving and helping all kids that need it.
It, it will basically be an extension of our existing RTI, um, process. So.
Move to approve the addition of a K-one RTI teaching position at Saint Jean Elementary for the 2015, 16 school year. Second.
Motion in the second, I'll favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you guys for doing that. It's so important at that age. Okay, next we have eliminate the kindergarten teacher A position.
Oh, since you just added the, uh, the classroom position, then, uh, we can eliminate the kindergarten teacher A position.
Move to eliminate the kindergarten teacher A position at the end of the 2014, 15 school year.
Motion in the second, I'll favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next is to move the June Board Meeting to June 23rd.
Uh, typically the, uh, our regular meetings are on the third Tuesday of each month. Uh, with June, uh, uh, being the, the last month in the fiscal year and with the, uh, development of the budget that's, that's going on, I would like to move the June Board Meeting to June 23rd, uh, to allow some additional time for, uh, for budget development.
Move to approve the next meeting of the Board of Education.
To move to June twenty-third, twenty fifteen.
Second?
Motion in the second. I'll favor by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed meeting with a closed record and a closed go following a regular opening meeting on June twenty-third, two thousand fifteen to be held in Arthur Thomas Library, seven fifteen Washington Street, St. John, Missouri for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the politics, items of business, legal action, causes of action or litigation, lease, purchase or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disloyal meaning or promoting particular employees, proceedings involving municipal or physical health of an identifiable individual, stylistic probation, exposure to graduation of identifiable individuals, testing and examination materials, welfare cases of identifiable individuals, preparation or negotiation with employee groups, software codes for electronic data processing and documentation thereof, specification for competitive bidding until approved or published, sealed bids and related documents until bids are open, sealed proposals and related documents until all proposals are rejected or any documents related to a negotiated contract until the contract is executed, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, records protected from disclosure by law, scientific and technological innovations in which the owner has a proprietary interest, records relating to municipal hotlines established for reporting abuse and, and wrongdoing, confidential privileged communication with an auditor, operational guidelines, policies and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident, existing or proposed security system and structural plans of district property, the portion of a record that identifies security system or access code, records identified would allow unauthorized access to or unlawful perjury, the configuration of components of the operation of computer, computer system, computer network or panel communication network, credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access codes or authorization codes that are used to protect electronic transactions. I further move that notice of this meeting and attempt to the agenda be posted as required by law.
Yeah, the motion in the second. Roko, Eric Balsor?
Yes.
Dave Boka?
Yes.
Charles Crowder Dapson?
John Dante?
Yes.
Carrie McDaniel, yes?
Martha Lee, second?
Yes.
Miss Budlow?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Check go.
I need to go to a closed session with a closed record and a closed vote after a short break.
Second?
A motion in the second. I'll favor by saying aye. Opposed? Thank you guys for coming.